Just a couple of last things, I think we do record the meeting to ensure that there's an accurate audit of the development. If there is any, I don't know who it is, is it John Watson? I need to read out the following. In the interest of the business and transparency of council members, proper or combined with the law, committing persons to record, photograph, social media in the laws which we're called to proceed to meetings in council or as committed, is now out of the public. This is not exempt by the law. Furthering the totality of the matter, you may be admitted to the areas related to the addition of licenses, you should use your prior consent. Anyone wishing to report on the meeting should notify the chair, as they can give you a full reading of the citizens and that only will happen. People of the age 18 or over, not wishing to be filmed or photographed, should notify the chair, as anything that occurs. I know it's not to be hey hey because I sound exposed, but not meeting. So I don't know about that.
Mr. Chair, can I ask my question? Is this John Watson? Can handle it?
He is. Yeah, he is. Please, please, can you turn off any of the phone noises? Would you make sure that's received? We're not expecting fire trials, so something is usually marked. And here, here. But the bills are standard. And toilets are at the end of the gallery, should ensure. You need them. Okay, okay. So that's the next move to the agenda. First, you see. Oh, thank you, thank you. Welcome, some decent people. Hillary, I think you're aware of the holiday list. And Nigel has had a standing commitment, I think, to school students as children. And so, please welcome Deborah Stalssassen. And Deborah Stalssassen was this for many a year. You can blackface me. Many, many years. And is actually a very, very momentous step in to have a very experienced clarify issue that was seen. And also Russell Reed. Russell Reed, he asked the council to continue to set this one. But he also has an element, he played in the sense that he is a... I always get it wrong.
Title, title. County, county.
That's what I was looking for. And of the Royal Association of Councils. And so he has quite the experience in election commissioning. We change that tonight on our agenda this evening. Certainly, certainly, discussion on. And so then to... I'm sorry, council on. Well, it was part of a request from Norfolk to trust to seek some help. And we did that last time. And we agreed with Russell to invite him along again this evening. We agreed in the sense of the Taran and the Mejan. But the first agreement was because we were elected, so it wasn't me. At this time. No, it was part of the Manchester's recommendations to us. We had a number of recommendations of which Russell was one.
I'm in the area of the regulation of the government of the United States, passing every other talk here through the challenge, challenge, place, open. And for me to do that, I feel, having been the big, ten to ten last. It's very important. It'd be useful to be here speaking of all the services, speaking of the next session we may have. The sessions we may have, seeds brewing, change, that's the one you want to use, the marketing you want to use. I think it helps me, I think it helps me to see that. But I will be playing quite a low profile, quite a low, quite a low, quite a low, quite a low main business.
Thank you, Russell. Thank you, Russell.
I would like to do my counter, do my counter, do my counter, do your side, count the dry side, if you have any more actions, if you have any more actions, if you have any more plates, we need to consider. Challenge should face me, how I react to the life, I'd be more happy, I'd be happier, I'd be happier, I'd be like challenging, like I faced and waiting and...
Okay, thank you.
Can I just say a little more courtesy of courtesy that the councils, that the councils, we're covered with that, with that?
I, I, I didn't see that as being an overriding, an overriding consideration, consideration, situation, situation. As asked us to look at.
But I'm necessary, I'm necessary, I did say, and I did say, could we ask the other councillors, ask the other councillors' views?
Yes, perhaps, yes, perhaps. But I didn't, but I didn't.
Okay.
Okay.
So can I move on to the sit down? I have two other questions. We have a set of papers in here, I have, I have to be trying to work with section of the agenda paper, perhaps you can help me.
They were for information, they were available, they were reasonable, had some meeting, but not picked up by councillors. So just as it were, just the affirmation of the councils.
Yes, in the paper, in the paper papers.
Sorry, we do not discuss this point at this point.
Is that difficult to type, trying to type? I don't go into detail, simply to say, in the paper, there is a response to the monitoring officer, which refers to email, email to you. But we have no reference to that, no concrete papers.
Then let's still, then let's still deal with that later, deal with that later.
Why can't we have that in the papers?
We will deal with that.
Two councillors' requests included, that we were specific, we were specific, it would not, it would not.
Every councillor he has had, has had access to that, access to that in their email to them.
Why isn't it, why isn't it?
It isn't, it isn't, and we will, and we will stop that conversation, stop that conversation.
It is an error, is it not?
I don't believe so, I don't believe so.
It's not an error, what is it?
Shall we move on, please? Shall we?
So you're not going to answer, you're not going to answer.
No, I'm not going to answer this question in this form.
Fine, fine. Look at the forum, look at the forum, which you cannot.
That will be after eight fifteen, that's fine.
That's fine.
So. So now move to, now move to the minutes of the meeting, the council. Sorry, declaration, sorry, declaration. And receive the questions, yes.
Apologies have been received from the councillors of London, councillors of London, after, after both of them. And from district councillors, and district councillors, no apology, no apology to the councillors who have had an answer. And apologies to the, apologies to the kids who have been saved from kids.
And we also have apologies from Mr. Councillor Newby, Councillor Newby. He was on holiday, he was on holiday, just returned, I think, but... And just a caution, a caution, and apologies, apologies.
No apology, so giving apologies to the councillors who have been referred, we need to...
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. So decorations of interest from the agenda, from the agenda, as usual, as usual. Yes, yes. Borrowing myself, borrowing myself, because of our, because of our... Any other decorations, any other decorations?
Two zero one nine, nineteen fifty five, removing the variation, removing the variation. I've been tapped in, I've been tapped in monitoring officer, I have to declare, I have to declare, it's just purely, it's just purely as an interest, as an interest. Church rules, I'm church, I'm the church, which is the church, which is next to us.
Thank you, thank you. Any others, any others?
Yes, I don't know, yes, I don't know. I own interest, well, item, well.
Right, yes. Because we are all as councillors, thank you, indeed, thank you. Okay, okay. Let's move on to confirming the minutes, the meeting, the council meeting on the twenty fourth of September. So I think it is normal, I think it is normal practice to take the page by page. So the first page is two eight five four. Any, any comments from the council, council? No, no. Sorry, Councillor Jones. Oh, right, oh, right, okay. Four seven one straight nineteen, last line.
Pally boat, pally boat. Four seven zero, change.
Sorry, sorry, zero, right, zero, right. It's actually, it's actually, it's planning, it should be.
As opposed to panel, as opposed to panel.
Page two eight five five.
First, last, please, on the four seven eight.
Four seven, four. Eight nineteen, eight nineteen. This is the third line, isn't it, third line, isn't it? North of the page, and the next of the page, and the next of the page, and the next of the page, and the head of the plan, the representative plan, plus the centre board, plus the board. Councillor J Amos, I wasn't, I wasn't there, I was standing, I was standing. They scrolled up into the distance.
Well, you know I can't get along very well. I got two sticks, I got two sticks instead of one, I just, I just... I told you, I said the most, I said the most.
So you weren't actually at that, so you weren't actually at that.
I, I was, I was, when they came back, we did talk, but I, but I...
Okay, that's fine.
But we could, we could, but...
All right, thank you, John, that's fine, thank you. Two eight five six, sorry, council on, sorry, council on. Four seven, yes, seven, yes. That was the county officer's opinion. Sorry, not, sorry, not. No, his advice was written, I mean, I think he was just giving his professional advice to the meeting, that was all. Yes, yes. I don't know this. Well, me, well, me. Well, then, well, then. Okay, well, okay, well. And I can't do anything about that now. Happy that we changed nineteen, professionally, gave a professional opinion, is that acceptable? We'll modify that word, that word. And if we then, if we then... I take your point, sorry. Yes, no, I take your point, I take your point about four eight, yes, meeting at eight fifty two. It was quite a difficult, um, how would you describe it? Speech. Well, I didn't, well, I didn't.
Can I suggest, can I suggest a deal with that, you can take, I have some comments on that, which, but, but at this point.
So page two eight five six, please. Any comments on two eight five six? Four seven, four seven, seventeen. That's the one we've just discussed, that's the one we've just discussed. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sometimes, I'm sorry, sometimes not. I don't have any, I don't have any update. Associate short season, first. I don't have any update, I don't have any update for that, for that.
If we amend minutes, or amend dates, or recommend dates on a councillor, a councillor, you need to ask, you need to ask the rest of the council whether they agree with it.
Okay, okay. Well, I mean, four seven seven, nineteen, you're referring to? I am, yes, I mean, that, that was not attributable to a councillor, I should comment, my professional advice.
If we're going to change, if we're going to change whatever, you've substituted it. You need to ask, you need to ask the rest of the councillor to agree to that operation.
Okay, then, okay.
So how might I propose to agree where this is to take it, if the councillor is to go, councillor issue, go opinion back.
How might I be, I don't know whether the rest of the council would.
Show hands, please, show hands, please, very much, very much. Okay, okay. Two, 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 two. Um, um. So two eight five six, the five six, we... Yes, yes. We will, I will, we'll make sure, we'll make sure we add that to the agenda, what we should do, of course, is to seek a response, yes. Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much. And I'm moving on to... Five seven, then. Any comments, any comments? Two eight five seven. Noted councillor Flowerdion.
Um, yeah, four eight seven nineteen, resolved, resolved. I don't recall, I don't recall any, any resolution on voting on that.
Well, I, not well, I... Makes sense enough to know that, I know that, every meeting we have, there is, I have, there is, it is always there, has been voted previously, been voted upon.
Under the legal, under the legal, anything that's sure here, and there, we have to, as a council, as a council, as a resolution, as a resolution. But we didn't, it says resolve, it says resolve.
With respect, with respect, we did, because I proposed, I proposed, I proposed that exclude the press, exclude press and public from my body of admission, public admission, I didn't actually, I didn't actually, but I did propose that we exclude press at that juncture.
Share, share.
I was just gonna add, I was just gonna add, I was...
No, no, but I still, but I still, maybe I had a solution, I tried, I pointed that back, I pointed that back, even though I did, still, I thought it solved, still, I thought it solved that.
What has been historically standard, historically, historically, yeah.
The resolution to express the public's decision?
Yes, yes.
Should we not have this councillor?
No, I'm not, I'm not having my leg attributed to it.
It's not going to, seriously, not to this figure, why, to specify, to propose, to establish, getting the back of the position, one job, one job they're going to, and a dis却a council. We don't, we don't want, we don't, we don't specifically go through the process, as I was saying, process, as I was saying, resolution, do that, resolution, do that, but it is a, I would maybe say, an answer, I think it is a formality.
Okay, so we're still on two eight five seven?
Can we take that, four eight nine nineteen? I, I do agree with Councillor Long. Seven words, six words, six words at a time, at a time. It's just not adequate, considering, considering the amount of time, the amount of time spoken, there's some points, there's some points. It's just not good, it's just not good, except it is not, except... Who made the decision, who made the decision to make that minute, six words, seven words, seven words from it?
The minutes of the meeting. The minutes of the meeting, it's the main assembly, it's the main assembly, it's the...
So as Chair, you had to answer these...
I have not, 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 of course.
So this has been, so this is tangled up, high point, on her own.
Well, she wrote, she wrote minutes, of course.
But as Chair, as Chair, believe, that is acceptable, except to seven, seven words. As a result of, as a result of so long's declaration, declaration, and her views, and her views, it is just, it is just...
We have said many times, in this meeting, and I know that Councillor Long, I know that Councillor Long has some opinions, that they are verbatim, they are a record of the resolutions, and...
Mister Chair, Councillor Long did not just, did not just leave the meeting. She spent some consideration, working up, working up the meeting, and that is not, and that is not required.
Believe it was possible, verbatim, verbatim, of course.
Did I say, did I say, I said there is no, there is no...
Of course, okay, I need to, I need to draw a line, draw a line, so it's, it is, it has not been...
But this is not, but this is not adequate.
Sure, that will be your, that will be your opinion, sir. Please, please.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I can't comment on what Councillor Long said. What I will say is, when you're writing up, when you're writing up, that are going down, that are going down, that are part of the confidential section of the meeting, sometimes we have to be quite, we have to be careful, we have to be careful about... We have to be careful about. About that section. Though that section is in word. Is in word. In order not to create issues. Create issues for the lines. About matters confidentially. So maybe. Maybe we was. Hillary was not. Has not. The issue. The issue. She didn't. She didn't. To mount. To mount.
So where are they called? So where are they called?
I can't. I can't.
So they didn't happen. So they didn't happen, in effect. In effect. They started. They started. Nothing. But nothing. Which is ludicrous. Which is ludicrous.
What I. I think what I meant. I think it would be nice to say. The answer was very ugly. And the councillor long to hear. She doesn't understand. What she had to say.
Sorry, I don't find that. Sorry, I don't find that. Exciting.
And we, of course. And we, of course, do have recording. The. The. Everybody said. What everybody said. So this report. This report.
Where is this recording?
We have. We have.
Look, with all due respect. I have requested. On numerous occasions. On numerous occasions. Of recordings of meetings. Of meetings. I never. I say never. I've never even had an acknowledgement. They are going to. They are going.
That is. That is. Not subject. Not subject. Not subject. So we shall. So we shall move on. So. So. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. For that. Any other questions? Any other questions on two eight five seven?
I have one. Four nine. I have one. Four nine. Sorry. Four nine. Two nineteen. Resolve that. Resolve that. Set out to review. Set out to review. Et cetera. What's happened? Et cetera. What's happened?
That is. That is part of our agenda for.
I don't see anything. I don't see anything. All I saw. All I saw. Your is six. Your age. Six. Page. Thirty. Your.
To propose. To propose. What is going to be discussed. Please. That is one of those. That is one of those proposals. So please let us now. Please let us now move on. So I'm happy. So I'm happy. To have you sign.
Yes. Yes. You.
Yes. 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 Show hands, please. Show hands.
As amended. As amended.
Yeah. Chair. Chair.
Could we please have? Could we please have recorded? Those stained? Those all stained? Or have? Objection.
Let yourself, councillor Long. Let yourself, councillor Long. Councillor Long. Am I right? Yes. Upstretched. Yes, yes. Upstretched. Again. Again. Okay. Councillor Long. Councillor Long. Two extensions. Two extensions. And one.
I'm not a true. I'm not a true record of the meeting. And I'd like that recorded. Like that. Recorded. Please, Clark. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So moving on. So moving on to next of the agenda. Next of the agenda. Um, we have. We have. More minutes. More minutes. Fees and charges. Fees and charges. Working group. Twenty seventeen. Twenty seventeen. Twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen. Um. So. These pages. Don't have. Don't have a. Page reference. Page reference. Um. For the people that were there. Attended that. Attended that meeting. Can they confirm? Can they confirm? To report of that meeting? To page. To page document. To page document. Any comments? Any comments present at that meeting? Present at that meeting? Perhaps. Perhaps.
True. I think it's true.
Okay. Okay. So. Those people for that. Our conclusion. Yes. No extensions. No extensions or objections. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to. Moving on to the next one. The next one. The next committee. Committee. That was held on the. Held on the twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen. I had a, I had a, again, that is, again, that is a half page, a half page.
Two eight five eight, two eight five eight, so, comments on two eight five eight, please.
People who were there, um, there was, there was, I had a concern, I had a concern about, about, should have been, but then I realised, but then I realised, planning aspects, planning aspects, discussion, so I guess the minute, so I guess the minute is correct. Just for clarification. Any other comments, 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 present at that meeting? Do I have a proposal, have a proposal then?
Yes, sir.
And, 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 show your hands, please, any abstentions, objections? Thank you, thank you. Adam, Adam Song. Oh, sir, oh, sir. Thank you, thank you. That's the, that's the, sign that, sign that. And that's, and that's October, October. And then on the eve, on the eve, of the, of the, it was May, October, then moved on to the very, new synergy, working group. So, again, I move, again, again, one and a half pages, one and a half pages, but not numbered, I'm just a point boarder, I'm not sure, I'm not sure on this, on this, it talks about presenting substitutes, three absolute members of that working group. I was also, I was also, not a meeting, but not a voting substitution, my name, my name. No, no, but I mean, no, but I mean, an exhibition, yes, yes, yeah, so my presence should be reported. Any other comments, any other comments?
On zero two nineteen, I apologize, I apologize.
I'm sorry, say it, say it again, say it again.
On two nineteen, I say that I, I say that I.
Yes, yes.
I won't, I did not, I won't, I did not, I might not remember that committee.
Okay, you, you apologized for any meeting, for any meeting taking place in that week, to the club, to the club, and, and, so on that point, so on that point, this is correct, this is correct, but, but, I accept, I accept, need to apologize for it. I don't know, that's as much, I know that's as much up to you as it is to me, sir. So, if you take, if you take his off, lad's name off?
Of Chen, of Chen, sorry, sorry, I also am not on my, I also am not on my, I'm not on this either.
Fair enough, thank you, fair enough, thank you, thank you.
We'd like to, we'd like to, we'd like to, we'd like to.
Yes, yes, yes.
We had this planning, we had this planning.
So, so adjustments, so adjustments, work present at the meeting, any, am I happy to sign these, put those to the ground? Thank you. Sign those, sign those.
Mister Chairman, we're going to be, we're going to be, we're going to be, we're going to be. We hit, we hit on, council long, and I were shared around, shared with the sandwiches, and the one, by councillor, and councillor, councillor. We witnessed, we witnessed, dumping, dumping on the ground, you go down to the bench, you go down to the bench.
It's been reported to South Norfolk, you are.
Quite boring, quite boring.
Quite, quite. I expect them, I expect them eventually to do something about it, do something about it, whatever they do. Council, council. So that's a missing, so that's a missing, yeah, I remember the conversation, yes.
Ten minutes script, ten minutes script, we need land, we need land, we've got, we've got, we've got, I have to, I have to, therapy, therapy, you know, anybody, anybody, was that one that straight, one that straight, so, so, the aerobic, first, the aerobic, first, please. I don't know, we thought, anybody, anybody, suggestion, our suggestion, our plan, or something, or something, to denote, to denote, we've actually, we've actually, definitely, definitely, yeah.
Yes, I, yes, I, there's a missing element, there's a missing element, thank you, thank you. So, formal, so formal words, formal words?